All right, well, welcome everybody to our Monday, April the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular work session board meeting. I call the meeting to order and I call on our treasurer, Mr. Bertram, to call the roll, please.
Yes, Mrs. Ramsey Hunter?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Stewart?
Here.
Mrs. Schabert?
Here.
Dr. Urso? I'm here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All right, you guys are quick. Any questions, comments? If there are none, then Mr. Bertram?
Keep my clicks down here. Okay.
We're moving, buddy.
Yes, we are. Mrs. Ramsey Hunter? Approve of the agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Schabert?
Yes.
Dr. Urso?
Yes.
So this evening, I'm excited to introduce the newest leader joining Middletown City Schools. Let's see if we have Dr. Hill on there. He has to...up, there he is. There he is. Very good. Joining Middletown City Schools, this is Dr. Denetras Hill, our new principal at Middletown High School. Before I introduce him, as part of, I just wanted to say a little bit about our search process. We asked our students and our staff and our community what they really would like to see in their high school principal, and the message was clear. They were looking for someone that had strong leadership, commitment to student success, and someone who truly connected with people. And we believe we found the perfect match right there, Dr. Hill. Right up there on Zoom. Dr. Hill brings more than twenty years of experience in education, including many successful years as a high school principal in Dayton and in Texas. Currently, he's serving as the Community Superintendent in Colorado. Throughout his career, he's built a strong reputation for improving student He's the kind of leader who rolls up his sleeves, builds strong relationships, and leads by example. Dr. Hill is passionate about building a school community where all students feel seen, supported, and inspired to reach their full potential. We're confident he's the right leader to take Middletown High School to the next level. Obviously, Dr. Hill's not here. He's in Colorado, but the beauty of technology today, he's able to join us on Zoom. So, Dr. Hill, the floor is all yours. Welcome to Middletown Board of Education. Sitting right, I don't know if you can see us, but we can definitely see you. You are a center of attention, so welcome to Middletown.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much for this wonderful introduction and the opportunity to serve this capacity. Very excited about becoming a committee. I've been doing my research and trying to figure out what the action means moving forward to bringing, you know, my experiences, all of my journey, my collective years, like sleeping into the House of Share. This is actually the culmination of year twenty-five for me. So, Middletown is restart of twenty-six, and I'm really looking forward to connecting with the community, building strong relationships with staff, students, and families, and also helping to fortify those partnerships that will help us to achieve the vision of a reimagined high school project. So, looking forward to being part of the Middletown family, and thank you for having me.
Very good. So, Dr. Hill, we can't wait to meet you in person. So, get things all tied up in Colorado and head on out to Ohio.
Okay, I mean, you know, just say the word. I can pack it up.
You don't have to wait.
Okay, well, yep, we look forward to seeing you.
Yeah, Dr. Hill, this is Chris Urso. I'm the Board President. On behalf of the Board, we'd like to welcome you. I heard your father got a chance to tour the campus one day with you. Heard just wonderful things about you and your family and your connection to the area. Look forward to meeting you in person and shaking a hand and getting to know you. And so, on behalf of the Board of Education, welcome to Middletown. And welcome home. It sounds like you're from this area, and so welcome back home.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I worked five years and thank public schools.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone like to...we're good? All right, I think we're good.
Very good. Okay, enjoy Colorado. A little bit longer.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, no public participation, correct? All right, then that brings us to presentations. The first being a district-wide learning and character program, Leader and Me, and I'll turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Howser or Mrs. Howser.
Yep, so we have Susannah Davis. Does anyone want to come on up? Well, so Leader and Me... So, we've been working towards an SEL program in the district since, shoot, back when we received our S R dollars, right after COVID. But if you recall, back then, it's, you know, we wound up focusing on the reading adoption. We focused on the math adoption, and really, it's taken us until now to really land on Leader and Me. We've been working, we've had pilots in the district. I know many of you have talked to Beth Hendricks at Amanda. We've had book studies on the Leader and Me. We've had our staff members from the high school visit, go on field trips down to, I think it was North Carolina, South Carolina. Did that, okay. We also were able to observe Leader and Me in the high school when we went to Colorado for our high school redesign. So, we've been working on this for the past couple of years, and it's just, we have just now coming to the Board to share this evening, Leader and Me. Leader and Me is really what you know as Franklin Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. So, this has been around for a while. Leader and Me is what you see in the schools. So, I'm going to stop there because we have Susannah Davis, our Director of Student Services, with us this evening. She's going to walk us through the program, share with you, and this is for the next three years. So, she, and she'll be able to answer your questions about the program and how we have come to land on this program for K-12. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Howser. Dr. Urso, Mrs. Schabert, members of the Board. Mr. Bertram, thank you for the opportunity to review and overview the Leader and Me program that appears on tonight's agenda for approval. As Mrs. Howser explained, the approval of this program fits into existing plans that have been discussed extensively within the district, including the S R plan, and is currently included in our Ed Steps plan. Mrs. Schabert and Mrs. Stewart have participated in the review of the Ed Steps plan as part of the district leadership team, so they are fully aware of the focus and emphasis on this type of programming. In addition, building and district-level administrators have collaborated to select a program that is most appropriate for implementation in Middletown after an exhaustive search. We evaluated A C L leadership programs using the following criteria, which was rigorous, including Castle-approved, ability to implement one consistent program K to twelve, the ability to adapt to the unique needs of every building within the district. This is not a one-size-fits-all, research-based, financially sustainable, and in line with principal feedback. Why Leader and Me? As Mrs. Howser mentioned, Leader and Me is rooted in the internationally-known Seven Habits of Highly Effective People by Stephen Covey. The program is adaptable and serves a school-wide model to foster leadership, responsibility, and achievement for all students. In addition, implementation of a consistent program K to twelve provides a common language across the district with age-appropriate focus. The amplification of student voice is also a driving factor within the programming, and it is highly transferable lifelong skills for our students at every level. You'll notice up on the side here and in the notes in front of you, this is a graph of those seven habits of highly effective people and how it is translated into the school environment in age-appropriate ways. What is Leader and Me? The district was drawn to Leader and Me based on several critical components, including the comprehensive research-based framework. There is extensive research to support this program and implementation in schools. Focus on development of leadership and life skills, direct impact on the school culture as a whole, and direct impact on academic performance. One of the pieces most desired by the principals was an integrated program that could be embedded and layered onto daily instruction as opposed to standalone lessons that lacked little to no direction or correlation to the school culture or climate. Quite simply, these lessons and program modules allow us to embed them in the instruction that's already going on, so it creates a very cohesive message for our students as they're engaging in their classroom and school environments. The research and evidence around the success in Leader and Me is profound. Leadership, culture, and academic focus results in higher academic engagement, improved student achievement, strong student voice, and leadership, increased teacher satisfaction, and positive school culture and climate. It is highly effective in similar districts to ours as well, as been evidenced in the data that we have received directly from Franklin Covey as we've explored Leader and Me. Sustainability and scalability are critical components of the recommendation to approve Leader and Me. It does us no good to put a program in to turn around and have to take it out after a short amount of time. In addition to continuous staff professional development, we will have a dedicated district coach to ensure continuity and clarity with implementation. As you mentioned earlier, the proposal you see in front of you is to implement in all schools, grades K through twelve, for three years. Leader and Me was one of the only programs that we explored that could accommodate a K-12 implementation. What we oftentimes found was strong programming K-six or strong programming seven-twelve. It very rarely allowed, outside of Leader and Me, a K-through-twelve focus with common language. Prior to the recommendation to implement Leader and Me, several elementary buildings engaged in a book study to familiarize themselves with the framework. And in addition, as Mrs. Howser mentioned, representatives from the high school staff were able to visit a high school showcase of a high school implementing Leader and Me with rave reviews. One attendee said, and I quote, "This is exactly what we need at Middletown High School." Included in your packet is the financial overview of the contracts. As you view the proposal, you will see a column of district cost. You will see a column of sponsor cost, and then you will see a total cost. After a detailed interview process, Middletown was awarded a grant from a Leader and Me-affiliated sponsor to offset the costs of the three-year agreement. The total that the district is responsible for, that is included in the contract over the three years, is found at the bottom of the district column. This initial district investment will be covered by IDEA Part B funds that are redirected for early intervening services. Sustainability is critical. Therefore, in years four-plus, the district investment would be approximately fifty thousand dollars a year for the entire K-12 program. Finally, it is worth noting Leader and Me is not an academic curriculum. Therefore, the request for approval follows different guidelines. We are compliant with Board policy and asking for approval tonight. Parents have full ability to view the materials via request, as always. And as a state, federal, at a state-federal meeting last week, we were assured the allocation for IDEA Part B will be in our budget for next year. At the end of two years, we will have fully paid the three-year contract. Those dollars are guaranteed in our IDEA Part B. Ultimately, Leader and Me provides a comprehensive framework with embedded support to empower students, engage staff, and align with our district goals. It is a perfect solution for our students. And I welcome any questions. Yes, ma'am.
I'm not familiar with Castle-approved. What does that mean?
It's a national clearinghouse for social-emotional learning and leadership curriculum, and so they vet the programs with a very thorough vetting process. And then only the highest-level programs receive their select designation. We only explore programs that were in the select category, and Leader and Me came out on top of those programs.
And district coach, you said there is a dedicated district coach. Is that an in-house person or somebody they send here?
It will not be an in-house person. It is a local person. They will not be solely, they will not be only focused on Middletown. They do have other districts in this area. However, it will be one person solely dedicated to us, so we will not have a variety of people coming in and out of the district. It would be one person that works with us exclusively as the district coach.
And how will they work with teachers as a whole, or how will they do that?
So, the way that this is set up, and I said, one of the pieces that the principals loved about this is there's a district leadership team where we will meet with the coach to spend a day long setting an umbrella of focus for the district. And the piece that principals loved about this is every building will have an adult lighthouse team. That adult lighthouse team will meet sometime between now and the start of next school year, and each building will determine their critical components for their building. And so, it will be, that's where the coach will work directly with that lighthouse team in every building. And then that team will be responsible for taking it to the building, the remainder of the teachers as a whole. It starts as a very teacher-driven focus from a professional development standpoint, but as I mentioned, it very quickly trickles down into student ownership. In the times that you've maybe visited Amanda, they have pictures of their lighthouse team in the hallways. The students lead tours. That student lighthouse team becomes a critical component of the implementation in the school environment, even at our youngest ages.
So, the curriculum, or training, rather, is specifically for the teachers. And then what they're gaining from it, they share with the students and have the students to help them execute.
There are online resources available for the teachers to use. They get embedded into the learning. So, they're not just stop everything that you're doing and do a standalone. It's related to those seven habits. And so, the teachers can weave that into the academic curriculum so that it can be layered on top, so that there's dual learning going on at the same time. One of the pieces of feedback we got in traditional social-emotional learning was that we had to stop what we were doing in the classroom, start a new lesson, and then fifteen minutes later had to transition back. And it had little to no impact on students over time because it was so compartmentalized. What you see with this leadership and character development is teachers have the ability to use those online resources to weave that in, so it's not that standalone piece.
Is it required? Is it mandatory for every teacher?
Yes, it will be, K through twelve. Now, it will look a little different at the seven through twelve. Seven and eight is very similar. It's drawing from a little bit of both areas. When we get to the nine through twelve aspect, the high school model has a lot of variability available to it. You can, what they, what we saw in North Carolina, what most schools do is after the adult lighthouse team sets some of the direction, they very quickly draw in a student lighthouse team, and the students form action teams. And in the school we were in, every student in the building, to a point, most students in the building, some exceptions, were involved in those action teams. And so, the students we talked to felt very connected to their school. They felt very much like they were making positive influence. And again, through those action teams, they were able to weave in that skill development of leadership and character.
I just had a question about the district's contribution and the sponsor, the financing of the program. Because tonight, I noticed here, we're asked to allocate four thirty-one, three oh-two, and then the sponsor is at two sixty-seven. Now, with the sponsor and grant funding that's proposed, is this a commitment that we have at this point, or is this funds that we have to go and search for those additional dollars? How does that work?
I'm sorry, Mr. Moore, which column?
This is just on the, yeah, just the, because the way I'm reading it here, the district's allocation, again, IDEA funding. But then, the remaining funds, it talks about grant, being grant-funded. But do we have that commitment right now for those remaining dollars, or how does that work?
So, the sponsor funds are guaranteed for all three years. The district funds are, we already have an allocation that, from this year, of half of that amount. And at a meeting last week, we were guaranteed the additional allocation in next year's budget for IDEA Part B. With the reallocation, it is, just to be clear, it is not the full IDEA Part B allocation. It is fifteen percent of that that is reallocated. So, at the end of the two-year budget, between this year and next year, the fiscal years, we will have covered the entire amount of the three-year commitment via grant dollars.
Yeah, and just asking that because of all the federal funding challenges that we have right now, so it's...
And it was an area of emphasis for us at the meeting last week to ensure that we heard loud and clear that that, those dollars were going to be in the budget for next year, in the allocation.
Who guaranteed that?
It was at the federal programs meeting. I can find out specific names. I don't have that information.
Because I think we're going to be discussing here shortly something else that was guaranteed to us, and yet, we're debating it tonight because a guarantee doesn't seem to be always a guarantee.
What is the IDEA?
It's, traditionally, it's students with disabilities. IDEA Part B, the early intervening services, can be used to go upstream, to intervene early so that we can avoid over-identification of students. So, oftentimes, you'll see that with SEL programming, leadership development, character programming, behavior programming, those types of things, academic tutoring, where we can go upstream to try and affect all students in tiers two and three of intervention, so as to possibly circumvent a later identification of a student with disabilities. It's not foolproof, but that is why the dollars are asked to be reallocated for early intervening specifically.
And so, because this training is SEL-focused, this falls up under the IDEA?
We choose how to redirect those funds. They do not tell us how to. We are asked to redirect fifteen percent of the funds to early intervening services. We have a menu of many options of what that can look like. This is how we have decided to ask for an approval of those reallocated funds.
Okay, thank you.
So, are we, as a district, and not to put you on the spot on this question, but it, and Randy, please help. I mean, are we, are we confident that this is a larger allocation? So, if there was anything to happen with those grant funds, I'm supportive of the program. I'm not saying that at all. I just want to make certain that, you know, being on the hook for additional funds, I mean, this is a, it's a bigger ask here, so any feedback there at all?
I would like to say that there are a lot of questions and concerns about what's going to happen, especially if they dismantle the Department of Education. How are those funds that are coming down from Washington going to get into our pockets at the, at the public school districts? My understanding is a hundred percent of what they've allocated for the title programs, the IDEA programs, any of the grants that they have, will be funneled to the state. The state then will send them to the districts. I haven't heard anything tell me contrary that we won't receive those funds. Will we receive them in the entirety? I wouldn't say a hundred percent yes, but I haven't heard anything to the contrary. One thing that I did hear is that out of the funds spent in Washington, only twenty percent of those funds are the grant funds that are coming into the state. The other eighty percent is all bureaucracy in Washington. That there's a possibility that there could be additional funds coming down to the state out of that eighty percent once it all shuts down. So, you know, do I feel relatively good that this is going to continue for a year or two? Yes, a hundred percent certain? No, but I don't think we could stop planning with what we don't know at this point.
I had a couple of questions. My microphone's shining red, so if I cut out, let me know. The first question being, is there any local data in regards to Amanda and how their lighthouse team? You're going to really challenge me to change batteries, talk, and do all this at the same time. Ask my wife. I'm good at one thing and one thing only. I can't divert attention. And so, at Amanda, have they been able to, I guess, their lighthouse teams, whether it be the adult functioning or the student functioning, how has that worked within our local community? And what results, whether it be the data and progression, whether it be academic attendance, et cetera, have we seen here locally at our Amanda Elementary?
I can start with the community impact. I know Mrs. Hendricks will talk very openly about the deep impact that the Leader and Me philosophy programming framework has had on their community as a whole at Amanda. And so, the deep connections with families, community leaders, and some of those types of things that she attributes directly to that Leader and Me framework and the common language that they're able to engage with at every level, from students to staff to parents to community members. Their parents speak the language. You will oftentimes, at hack nights and that type of thing, this is an area of emphasis for them in terms of just reinforcing that language, reinforcing the concepts, ensuring that everyone knows. In terms of data, there is data. I can certainly get you copies of that that's showing. I cannot say that the data we have contributes in the ways directly in terms of academics or attendance. We have seen, obviously, with the Momentum Award, direct impacts on academics. We have seen improvements across the district, and Amanda is no exception in terms of attendance. And so, I think we have a multitude of pieces that have been put in place to help that. Mrs. Hendricks would clearly tell you that a huge component of that has been the emphasis from Leader and Me. And so, they do take a survey on a yearly basis, so there is some qualitative data in terms of survey. And so, we can get that. I don't have that available this evening, but we do see positive impacts, which is really where we began to see when we first started this process, long before we landed here, many of the principals saying and reaching out to Mrs. Hendricks to say, what's going on there? How can we pull from it? We're hearing great things. And they went off and started those book studies on their own just to begin to learn about the framework without even, and moving in the direction of the program. And so, just the philosophy piece, the language piece, we're seeing that across several of the elementaries at this point who are ripe for this type of programming, and they're excited about the ability to really streamline that. And we've not talked about, with the transiguency of some of our populations and students, you know, we see a lot of students moving from building to building throughout the year. Currently, we have different programs in every building, so a student jumps in, they have no idea. They've not learned the language. They have no idea what the philosophies are. This would be a powerful move for our families as well as their students' transition around the district that they're able to jump in and know, regardless of what building they're in. Oh, I know that. I'm familiar with that. I can jump right in and be a contributing part of that school environment.
Appreciate that. My next question, students on I E Ps, ESL, how does that, how does this program either, I don't know if accommodates the right word, but respect all students within our district?
The resources are tiered, so there are specific resources in regards to Mrs. Stewart's question about how the teachers are integrating that, multiple languages, multiple levels of presentation of materials. Obviously, near and dear to my heart, making sure that all those populations can access. And so, we truly mean all students, and this program will help us to achieve all students having access.
My last question, students, understanding our students are transient, staff is sometimes transient also. And so, first year, I imagine professional development will be pretty heavy. heavy. Years two, three into perpetuity, how will we make sure new staff, what kinds of systems will be the lighthouse teams in the school? How do you envision making sure that new staff that comes in is as well-versed as they need to be to implement on day one?
Mr. Edwards and I have had some conversation about this, about integrating, again, not in year one per se, as we're all learning it, but in years two and beyond, integrating that introduction into new staff orientation. Because again, K-12, we can easily integrate that into new staff orientation, so they have a fundamental understanding of the framework and the program as a whole. And then at the building level, that lighthouse team, on a yearly basis, will be leading the staff in terms of re-emphasis on the priorities, ensuring that new staff are understanding. Because again, I can't hit this enough, the beauty is, no two buildings are going to look exactly alike. And so as staff transition, they'll be able, the common language, common understanding will be a huge help, but they'll have to get acclimated to what those priorities are at the building that they're going to. And that will be through that lighthouse team, that adult lighthouse team. And probably in some cases, the student lighthouse team as well will play a critical role in welcoming those new staff members.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's exciting. It's expensive, but it's exciting. I think it's absolutely a good program for our district.
Thank you.
So you'll see this contract later on in the agenda for a vote.
Thank you. The second presentation this evening is discussing President Trump's executive order to claw back the ARP/ESER funding dollars. Turn it over to our treasurer, Mr. Bertram.
All right, and I'll ask Mr. Eric Satzi, our business manager, to step forward as well, because I'm sure you're going to have questions he'll be better suited to answer than I am about the project itself. Well, as we, as I've shared with the board, and now I'd like to share with the community, effective March 28th, President Trump signed an executive order to claw back the ARP/ESER funding. And the ESER funding is what our district received after the COVID pandemic, and we received about $43.5 million of ESER spending. And we use this spending to help our kids get caught up, catch up from all the school that they missed during the pandemic. And then we did have some remaining dollars left after the expiration date that we were allowed to continue using upon the state's approval and upon the fed's approval, which we did receive. And as you recall, we had started using some of those dollars in a joint venture with the city at the community center. And that didn't work out to the way we had hoped it would, so then we diverted those dollars into a transportation slash new maintenance facility, which was greatly needed. So what has transpired since March 28th is we received an email from the Department of Education from an assistant administrator of the Office of Federal Programs on April 1st. And she had asked, she kind of went through and said, these dollars are being clawed back to the federal government, any unused dollars. And she had asked, in the meantime, any work that may be affected by this change should be paused immediately. And we're talking about administrative assistant that was asking this of us. We received a second email on April 4th, and that email pretty much said the same thing, that they're looking at the processes, seeing what can be done, and it said, in the meantime, any activities tied to these funds should remain on hold. Well, we're in the middle of a $10 million construction project, to which $6.5 million is being used out of leftover ESER funds, and then the remainder through other uses of district funds. Very concerning to Superintendent Hauser, myself, and Mr. Satzi. And we, it's hard to put a project on hold when everything's in motion, when everything's moving and we have so little information about it. Immediately, I put a letter together, I sent it out to Congressman Davidson, who is our representative at, from United States Congress. And then I also shared the letter with our U.S. Senators, Marino and Huestead. And Davidson's office contacted me immediately. I got an email back from them right away, wanted to know what was going on. I had a conversation with them Wednesday, a good conversation, and also found out at that point that the letter that had gone out to all the departments of education throughout the country was from Linda McMahon, who's the new secretary of the Federal Department of Education. And there were actually remedies in place in this letter that says, you have the ability to continue your projects, but you have to jump through this hoop and you have to jump through that hoop. Still don't know the full details of what's in those hoops. I have a better understanding with the conversations I've had. And there's no guarantees that it'll still make it, you'll make it through the hoops, but with the processes that we've gone through to get approved originally, and we have used our legal counsel to help us with that documentation to get us approved initially for, I should step back. Late liquidation were the dollars that were left over that we got approval to be able to spend out now through December of this year. That timeline has been moving further out as we've gone. And we had to have that information in late December, and they approved that in early February. Meanwhile, obviously, we continued the project, feeling very good that it was going to get approved and continue. I will say that the two hoops, one is, you've got to get your state to approve it again, and you've got to get the feds to approve it again. So from what I'm hearing is, there may be some guidelines to help us with that coming out. I did talk to an Aaron Roush, who is a high director at the Department of Education, handles the fiscal side of the Department of Education. And first of all, he is very apologetic that the admin assistant didn't share this letter with us originally. I said, you put a lot of us in a panic, not thinking there was any remedy to be able to continue the projects that we had started. And we're one of 17 or 18 districts that have a project approved in late liquidation, total of about $15 million statewide. We have about $6.5 million of the projects still in ESER funds. We are the lion's share of those 17 or 18 districts. And so at this point, still communicating, still talking to legislators. I let our local legislators, our Senator Lang and Representative Thomas Hall, know about our, about this as well. And I think we just got to get our ducks in a row, put a nice letter together to look for approvals, look for reference letters, which I'm working on with our senators and our congressmen, to try to get them to approve it and, for Ohio, and then at the federal program. At this point, I'd ask Mr. Satzi to talk a little bit about the project, where we are in the project, and in his point of view, why we believe this needs to continue.
Mr. Bertram, just a quick question. What constitutes the approval process, whether it be state or federal?
Those are the details they haven't given me yet. They said they're working on the details, and in fact, I was hoping to get an email today, and I haven't gotten it yet.
So we don't know what the approval...
On what it looks like at the local level. It still has to comply with the original context of why you use the ARP and the ESER dollars. We've done that from the start. It hasn't changed.
It's been approved from the start.
You know, we, it's to improve our kids' learning abilities. It had to do with clean air, quality air. It had a lot of reasons why you could use these dollars.
Attendance.
Attendance was a big one, to improve attendance, and we did meet all those requirements when we initially applied for this funding for this project.
Okay.
I know that doesn't answer the question, because I don't know the answer, exactly what they're looking for. Right now, I'm just getting ideas.
Do you know the timeline as to when the approval process? Because I think the request tonight is timeliness.
Yes.
And so is there any indication as to the timeline as to when they'll give us information, when we'll submit the information, when a decision will be made on that information?
Yeah, no timelines at this point either, but we just know from our perspective, time is of the essence. We want to move as quick as we can to get our approvals as quick as we can. And we do have some contingency plans in place that we talked about a little bit tonight, of how we can continue the project, continue to pay for it without using the ESER dollars, which certainly will have us worried a little bit, but I'm going to tell you from a financial point and some of the things that are coming down the pipe with the state budget, I don't know that we need to worry. There's other things we need to worry about with the state budget, but getting this project, to continue this project and completing this project, you know, does have to be a priority of the districts. And Eric's certainly going to help you with that.
Last thing to follow up. You said we're urgent. Is the state and the feds, are they equally urgent? Because we can be as urgent as we want to be, but if they have this, no sense of urgency, then our urgency is met with nothing.
I believe the fed is very urgent. That's why they did it in such a rush. I will tell you, I did feel good that the letter from Linda McMahon did give us the out, not the out, the avenue to go ahead and say, hey, all right, we've got projects in process. Are we just done with those? Or is there a process we can continue them? By her having that in her short letter, it's just a page and a few lines on the back, that's good news to me, just knowing that they realize they had the, they knew that there are projects out there, and you just can't stop them. It doesn't make sense.
Did, in that letter that you got, is there a reason why they're stopping these funds or stopping this process?
The main thing that they said in that is, it's been five years since the COVID event took place. Any monies that are still outstanding, should have been spent a long time ago in their eyes. I will tell you, the processes between a school district receiving the money versus all the other government entities that receive the money, at least in Ohio, I can only speak for Ohio, are totally different. In Ohio, we have to do everything by reimbursements. The other governments, your townships, your villages, your cities, they were giving all their money upfront. So the city, you know, the 10 or 12 million, the city of Hamilton, the city of Middletown received, I don't know why I said Hamilton. I'm probably in trouble again. They received, they already had it in the bank, whereas we didn't have that luxury. But I believe their money's going to be clawed back too, if they don't have projects that can get approved. Any monies, they still had two additional years to spend their money than we had. That's why we got late liquidation. School districts have received that, so kind of counter our shorter-term versus their longer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Randy. Randy asked me to speak just a little bit as far as on the project, about what it is, what it means to us, where we're at in the project, to give you kind of a picture, a snapshot of what's happening right now with respect to the funds that are going on and being frozen at this point, and what that kind of means to us. The issue is, you know, we started this project with fidelity. Going forward, as soon as we received the approvals, we got the necessary approvals to move forward, continued through that entire process. We went through an entire process with the board as far as going through, taking you out there, showing you what the things are that was going to, what the need was in order to do that. So once we received approval of that, we continued with doing what was necessary in order to do that. So if you look at the project site, what we did was, is that we actually demoed a massive portion of the segments that are out there and started building what was necessary in order to do that from a transitional approach to what did we need to do. So when we received the word just recently, April 1st, that we need to pause this project, it's not easy to pause a $10 million project that has been moving at a pace that is very well, in moving at a way that we believe would satisfy the timeline requirements that they needed to do. In fact, we would be well within what those timeline requirements were in order to do that. So, yeah, got some pictures. And I've been sending pictures all along as far as the project going forward with all the underground utilities. If you look at the space that we're at, you know, you can see things coming out of the ground now. The issue with that is, is from a pause perspective, if we pause one day right now, with what's happening is, is that the elements of us not being able to put a roof over it, because the facility right now has no roof, it has walls that are open, it has exposed pieces that go through to do that. Any pause at this point in time has a very drastic effect on the ability for us to continue going forward with the quality that is necessary in order for us to move through that project. As we start to look at this, and I look at the project cash request versus the projects that are coming in with billing that haven't been paid through the reimbursement process, I'm over $4.2 million totaled that we've spent of the $9.9 million. We're 41% into this project right now, with an anticipated ending date of this being October of this, of this year, going through all the things from move-in to tearing down the rest of the portion of the facility to do that. So my issue is, is that we can't pause. We have already gone through a process that we have temporarily moved our facility down the street to a rented facility that we are currently parking buses on and a portion of our drivers now to do that. And just the district operations and how that works is not a long-term solution. It can be done temporarily, but from a long-term perspective, being able to move your partial operations down to a lot that is an eighth of a mile down the street, be able to have internet and all the things that are necessary, because all of our things go along with having technology components to do that, that right now is completely bifurcated between multiple spots. And for us to be able to do that really hinders just overall operations of what's going on. So all of those things kind of come together in the fact that, number one, if we were to delay and tell the contractor that's currently on-site, the design-built contractor, you need to pause, they're going to be, well, we need to, our workers need to work. We need to go somewhere in order to do that. So one of the big pieces of that is that they're going to, if we wanted to do, let's say, a temporary delay to go through and do that, and delay that, they move off-site. I don't know what the timeframe is in order for the contractor to come back to be able to do that. The second piece is what I alluded to in the beginning, is that I don't know what the condition of the site will be once they come back. And we've already put over $4.1 million into that. How much of that would have to be redone, reallocated, regone through an entire process? And not only just the that, of what would it be to be able, just to evaluate what that is in what long term? This facility's supposed to last us the next 50 years. And I do think it has the capability of doing that, to do the things that we need to have in that. So I'm concerned about the demolition that we've already done. I'm concerned about the protection of the existing facility. Any contract that we put in to move them off, there would also be costs associated with that, and penalties already built into our contract to move past that timeline. The rehabilitation cost to go through and do that, and then the lease of the space that we currently have is currently to end in September. I have no guarantee that the place that we're going to do is going to allow us to continue past that. In fact, they've kind of wanted their space back in order to do that, to go forward. So I feel like we would have certainly negotiation to do and be able to figure that out. But any pause to that is going to, I think, cost us, and I don't have the dollar figures, I know it's going to cost more money. I know it's going to be a bigger piece to do that. So for a letter to say, just pause your activities, well, that's not a, that's not a viable solution in order for us to go through and do that. And I've shared those concerns with both Mr. Bertram and Mrs. Hauser. So, you know, we definitely need to continue this. You know the condition of the facility before. We were going to have to do something anyway, so continuing this is definitely something we need to do. And we'll have to figure out, you know, what that means from a fiscal standpoint going forward. There are options. I know we've talked about that. I know Mr. Bertram's talked a little bit about that as far as going forward, but I just don't see it as a realistic option to say, okay, we're just going to stop and live with what we have. That's not going to be a functional piece. So I can open it up to questions at this point. Like I said, I've tried to share photos all along about where we're going, the project's going great, with the exception of this bump in the road right now.
So, fiscally, what options do we have?
I'll let Randy speak to that.
Yeah, as we look into the fiscal, we know, we know right now, as it's paused, part of this process is being paid, about 35%, 38% of it is being paid out of PI. We could spend the PI funds, hold off on spending the ESER funds, and then once the PI runs, we'll have to move into the general fund dollars. As bad as that sounds, it may not be a bad option, and we'll talk more about it later in the meeting, with what's going on with the House version of House Bill 96 for the biennium budget. You know, there's, and I hate saying it again, we borrowed $2 million to get this running. There's always that option again, to borrow additional funds if we didn't want to tap into the ESER funds. I will tell you that the PI funds have come in a little higher than what my expectations were this year, by about $500,000. Not enough to pay for 4.2 million left in project work here. But we'll be able to work through that, but, you know, I, from our point of view, I don't know what other option we have, but to continue it and figure out the funding as we go.
What's the approximate cost to dry it in? And what's the approximate timeline to dry it in?
Too early to tell at this point. Too early to tell at this point. That is something that we're going to look through to do. I think minimally, that would be the minimum option in order to do that. Again, from an operational perspective, it's, it is bad, right? You know, we can get through it for a timeframe, but if that's an extended period, it is extremely difficult to do what we're doing.
It's hard to make a decision with incomplete information. And we're being charged, as a district, you included, to make a decision without information or clear timeline as to when that information will be available to us. Is there a way to work in stages? And the first stage would be to get the facility dried in, so given the circumstances that we're not going to find ourselves spending more to replicate work that's already been done. And then, once that time is up, hopefully the urgency that we have is shared by our state government and our federal government, that we'll have some clarity as to what then. To talk about additional loans or pulling from general fund, when we came into this project, I mean, it was some trepidation to fund it the way we are. To come back to that conversation again, I don't know if my appetite's changed any different. I don't know my colleagues, where they are within it. But is it possible? I don't know the sequence of events. I'm not a builder. And so I don't know what your next steps are to understand. Is that, is putting a roof on one of your next steps?
Yes. So actually, siding goes on first, so that's the next step. It's moving in that process now. They're, they finished the pouring. Yeah, some of the front facade is being done. So the next step is siding goes on, insulation in those pieces, then roof goes on. Then we need to talk about windows and drying in the exterior. Those are all the next steps. I don't have it broken out to give you what the next step of that is at this point. We are working on that, as far as coming through a timeline to be able to get it to that point. But regardless, that's where it has to get to. So I can tell you when I'm there, and I can give you some more information about what is going to happen in the next couple of weeks.
Is that a month? Is that six weeks? Is there any indication as to the length of time it requires for that? And I know it's hinged on weather and all kinds of variables, but if you were guessing today...
I don't like to guess as far as doing that. I do have a project schedule that we're looking to try to elevate to get to that point. Give me another week, and I'll give you a better answer. So everything's came so quickly at this point. It would be out of sequence to do the things that we're doing now to get to that point. That's what we're working through with the contractor to figure that out. It's got to be minimally dried in. That is the bare minimum of what needs to happen in order to go forward to do that. And what I would mean by that is that all of the siding, the exterior, the roof, the windows, all the guttering systems that go through to do that, I would also include any of the underground guttering or where that water goes, so it doesn't back up into the facility, would be part of that as well. So we're looking at what it would take in order to do that now. So it's a great question. I wish I had time to get you that information in the timeframe, but we were so, we've got to get you the information as quickly as we can because of the magnitude of what's happening.
So we've reached out to Vice President Vance regarding this?
We're getting ready to.
I have not, because I'm kind of looking at process and procedure before I play that card. That's an important card, obviously, and I want to make sure I have the questions that he may be asking, able to answer those questions.
It's not yet coming.
Okay. You know, I would think, just looking at this, again, I started pulling numbers today and ran out of time for the meeting tonight. We, our pay apps are coming in about $600,000 a month. And we're probably still sitting on another $1.5 to $1.8 million of PI funds to be spent on this project. So we're probably good for three months just using those PI dollars to get us to that point. I don't know how long it's going to take to finish that envelope. But, you know, I don't think we have to panic and make a rush decision on this, just knowing we do have several months to use other funds.
Am I correct? I think you'd indicated that we had made a request for an allocation prior to the date that this letter went out, and that still was paused?
Yes. And I found out the reason behind that as well. We put it in March 20th, and again, this pause didn't start until March 28th. The Department of Education held all those pay apps for the ARPESO dollars through the month of March, because they had heard from the feds earlier that they were going to change the approval process at the federal level. So the state didn't have the ability at that time to know how to submit those and the reasoning behind the submissions. But they did submit them last week, and they're hoping we'll see payment for those priors, if not this week, next week. No guarantee. And one thing I want to add, I've got Susanna in the room. I was also told that there were three tutoring companies that are used in Ohio, Amplify being one of them. And our services for Amplify at Highview were suspended immediately as of the 1st of April, whenever they got their notice. But they said they've already started going through the process, and they believe those services will be coming back by next week. So you talk about the speed of the government moving, that seems pretty quick, and that gives me hope as well, too, if we see those services back on-site from those agencies.
I would, I would hope also that there must be somebody who's listening to this tonight that has some influence somewhere to realize that this is not an easy thing for a district like ours to do. It's a horrible position to put this community in without any forethought. I mean, it may seem like a pittance to those who are making these decisions, but to a community like this, we should not have to be scratching the surface for money that needs to be used for other things. So I'm begging anybody who has any influence, I'm not one of those people, with the people who are making these decisions, if they would please offer some assistance. Because obviously, you haven't gotten an answer from our state senators, and that's appalling to me. Public education, any education, needs to be dealt with immediately, and we should not be left hanging like this. And I will send my letters tomorrow, as if mine are going to make a difference. But I will.
Yeah. And Ms. Hauser and I have talked today. There are letters we can put together asking, you know, for all our constituents to reach out to their legislators, and we're working on that as well. We've got everything in motion that we possibly know of and can think of right now to get this project finished using these ESER funds. But meantime, you know, we just want you to be aware that it is a project. We don't need board's approval to continue what you're doing. You already gave us that. But if we get to a point where you said, hey, we don't have enough information, we want to pause, that's when we need a vote of the board to make that decision.
And I think that's ridiculous, that this district has to be put in that position. And I'm going to be very angry if we have to go that far.
And we're one of 18, but...
I don't care.
I'm, I'm an optimist. I like to think the glass is half-full. Our pencils are going to get sharper to put everything in place. We're not just going to talk about the reasons they approved it originally, but the other reasons that they can't just leave a project half.
That's what I said. Make sure you use the pictures. Yeah, the pictures, yes, speak volumes. You can't leave a project like that midstream.
I will tell you, yeah, I will tell you, the pictures that I sent to Warren Davidson's office, that got me the phone call back, saying, oh, my gosh, yeah, this doesn't make sense.
Well, I'm appalled that those higher up are not responding. That makes me very angry.
Is this the only project that's under late liquidation?
No, there are 17 or 18 in total.
I mean, for us.
For us, it is.
Yes.
And so the other, did you say we receive $43 million?
Total for the ESER funds.
Total, so none of those dollars are being...
6.76 is what we approved for this project.
Right. But none of those dollars are being recalled, as far as you know?
Those are spent.
It's just the late liquidation.
This is all that's left. Yes. We spent, we met all the other timelines. We just knew when we came down the pike at the last minute, coming off the community center project, we had to revert to another project to try and spend those out rather than send them back. Well, did we know they tried to claw them back, but we can't see into the future. I know it's a sore subject. Usually only Eric delivers that, but I thought I'd...
I'm going with the dark side.
Any other questions?
I don't believe so. Thank you.
We'll keep you posted.
All right. Well, that brings us to tonight's consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
A second, please. Tara, thank you, Tara. Questions, comments, things to discuss within tonight's consent agenda?
I can give you a, sum it up.
Yeah, could you please?
So you're going to start to see, as a matter of fact, we started to see this last board meeting, you're going to start to see some of the yearly contracts on the board agenda. But for this evening, you see two field trips, overnight field trips. One of the field trips is Rosa Parks. Our influencers are going to Camp Kern, and the other field trip, Central Academy. Fifth and sixth, all fifth and sixth graders are going to Camp Campbell Guard. So both of those field trips we've had in the past, same format, same cost, same how they're raising the funds. Rosa Parks is using their district funds to attend the field trips. So you see those on the agenda tonight. You see, we have earned a grant at the high school, three-year grant through the Bezos Foundation. It's for training. It's not dollars, it's time and training for our staff members to learn how to use AI in their planning of lessons in the classroom. So that's three years, 115 licenses, so that's pretty exciting. So it's a contract that you're going to see on the board agenda tonight to approve. We have a couple contracts for student services, a student for out being outplaced at Warren County, contract for some summer services for one of our high school students. We also have some of our curriculum contracts for next school year on the board agenda tonight. One of our contracts is for seventh through 12th graders. It keeps our students secure and where they should be in the classroom during classroom lessons. Screencastify and WeVideo, that's for creation of videos. And we have Newzella, that is seventh through 12, and ELA, Science and Social Studies, Reading Supplemental Curriculum.
Is that actively used?
Yes, it is. We do, yes. That's why, I mean, and that's, that's a big price tag too each year. So yes, it is. Yeah, we do. And then we have the Butler County ESC contract over the summer for testing of our preschoolers entering into kindergarten. So all pretty routine contracts that you start to see for this time of school year.
All right. Any questions regarding the consent agenda prior to the motion to vote? I think we're ready to vote. Mr. Bertram?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Schyber?
Yes.
Dr. Ursula?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ramsey Hunter?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Under curriculum, we have the Leader and Me contract. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
In a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any questions, comments regarding that contract?
No, I think it's exciting. It's something that's going to go in through the high school, too. It sort of sounds like it, it all dovetails with the passport to tomorrow, too. It kind of all links in there together.
All the skills.
Mm-hmm.
And I know it's a significant contract, but I want to extend our thank you to the anonymous donor. I don't know how you thank an anonymous donor, but if that's possible, we would like to extend his or her, our deepest appreciation.
Who is the sponsor? I mean, we should know for the public record about the sponsor.
It's anonymous, right?
It's through Leader and Me.
Yes, through Leader and Me, yeah. It's not, yeah, it's not through Middletown, it's through Leader and Me.
So how do we account for, how do we go about accounting for an anonymous donor? Is this...
They only charge us the difference.
So that's what...
We invoice the difference.
Again, I, I don't want to sound negative. I just, when we're thinking about this, this donation that's coming, I guess it's Kobe? Is that who's giving us the, is it Kobe the sponsor on this, offsetting the cost? Is that what, it's being defined as a grant? All I'm saying is that if we're looking at petition cuts, this contract is three-year contract, if they weren't able to, if something happens in this agreement, it's $267,000. And we're at $5.5 million where we're trying to figure out those funds. Hopefully, in the next three months, we'll see those dollars come through. But what about this 267 gap? Should that not...
That is guaranteed by Leader and Me. They're only invoicing us for the difference, so it's up to them to collect on that, not us.
Just want to be clear on that.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
That's a fair question.
Yep.
All right. If there's nothing else, are we ready to vote?
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Schyber?
Yes.
Dr. Ursula?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramsey Hunter?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
I'm Dr. Moore.
I'll take Dr. Moore, thank you. Yeah, yes.
All right. Motion carries. Another contract under curriculum is the Sandy Pines Residential Treatment Center. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved or approved?
In a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Hauser, do you want to give us a little insight on this?
Sure. This is a contract for one of our foster care placed students. Yeah, this, yeah, it's a placement determined by Cincinnati Children's and Butler County Children's Services for our foster care. So it's a contract. The students, one of our district students that we need to approve for placement.
How does that work?
So there's an IEP team, so Cincinnati Children's comes together with Butler County Children's Services. They determine where the best placement is, and this is the facility that was decided upon.
Was this for a summer, a summer program, did I read, or is this...
Remainder of the year.
It's the remainder, yeah.
So it's a student that we can no longer...
This is a foster, this is a foster care student. Yes, it's, they've probably never been in our buildings.
Oh.
Yeah.
Because, remind me, Sandy Pines is in...
It's in Florida, yes. We put, we only pay for the education. Yeah, we don't pay for the travel, we only pay for the education. Yeah.
Any additional questions? Mr. Bertram?
Mrs. Schyber?
Yes.
Dr. Ursula?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramsey Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
All right. Under committee reports, any committees from our last meeting to now, have they met? And is there anything to report?
No. We, we made the decision to hold tight on the district and the city schools committee until we met further and decided how we wanted to proceed. So that committee, we did not have DLT. I think that, that's it.
Just for a point of clarification, I know through the council meeting, they made a decision. Is that effective a mediate, or will our board representatives serve on that committee until the next, I guess, term?
I am serving until it is approved. It hasn't been approved yet. So I was told, I got an agenda for the last meeting, and I asked that question, and he said that there's a process that has not stamped it to be official. So once that happens, I'll know. But until then, I'm still serving on the planning committee.
Okay.
With that being considered, will you be, I guess, suggested, recommended, part of the process for who, I guess, since they're going to, I guess, vote or determine a representative?
All that was said was, they said that everyone is welcome to apply. In the meantime, today, figure it out, to go onto the city site and fill out that questionnaire or whatever. Yeah, that was all, that was...
All right. Thank you. Other questions or comments regarding district committees? And again, just to reiterate what Ms. Hauser, the city district relations committee, just to kind of get a board impression, recalibrate, understand best in terms of where we are as a, as a team and how that will best serve the district and city moving forward. And so we'll talk over the next few weeks and hopefully figure out what that looks like.
Yeah, because we would, would Tara apply, or would the district apply?
I think it would be individuals, is my understanding.
Yep, that's what it sounds like. It's not the district, right.
That would bring us to Board of Education reports. Ms. Ramsey Hunter, anything to report this evening?
No.
Mr. Moore, anything to report?
Yes. Just want to say thank you to the folks in the district. I'm going to name several folks here in a few minutes, but, you know, as we speak about the, the planning commission and the city council's decision to cut the seat on the planning commission, that seat that had been established, or was established since 1959. Continue to feel some frustration with that decision, I think all of us do, but wanted to just say to Deb and Randy, Rick Pierce, Tom Bricki, Bill Becker, and to my colleagues, and to many of the folks, the MTA as well, who turned out to support our efforts. Truly do appreciate that. We did our best, and we tried to make our case, but wanted to say thank you to all the folks who were involved in that. We had a full house. I think we had, we represented the district well. And we'll continue to do what's best for kids and families in our district. And look forward to those discussions about the district school committee, as well as how this may shape the relationship on the comprehensive school finance agreement, which is something we haven't talked about. So as a partner, it's important to be treated as a partner. And we'll have to see where this discussion leads us. Certainly not wanting to take retribution in any way, but there's a lot on the table at this point. So I'll close there.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Stewart, anything to report tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Shiber, anything tonight?
No, I've already said what I needed to say, thank you.
All right, I don't have anything this evening, Mr. Bertram, anything to report?
Yes, and I told you earlier tonight that I spent three and a half days up in Columbus for our annual workshop, and the, the topic on the table wasn't the governor's version of House Bill ninety-six for the biennium budget, it was the House's version, and what changed in the House's version. And they did vote on it last Thursday, they did approve it on Thursday, and I, I will start out by saying, again, they're no friend to public education. Some of the changes that are coming down the pike are very egregious and very hateful to public education, and, you know, I'm very disappointed in them. I'll start out by saying the biggest thing on the table that I think is the most harmful to the education, public education, isn't the flat funding that they're doing for three hundred and twenty-three districts of just giving them the guarantee of what they received this year, plus fifty dollars per student for the next two years. We're not one of those districts, we're gonna still see a bump, as, as I had mentioned before, but only half as much as what the governor was going to give Middletown City Schools. Still a much better bump than, than most other districts, more than half the districts. It is the thirty percent cap that they're going to put on an annual basis to the amount of carryover that a school district can maintain. Thirty percent is very low. Right now, we're at thirty-eight percent, to give you an idea, and they're not even given, this is the House version, we still gotta go to the Senate again, I tell you, my glass is half-full, I hope things can change, they feel great, 'cause they changed it from twenty-five percent to thirty percent before they voted on it with an amendment. That thirty percent will put many, many districts in dire straits where they're going to see themselves borrowing money to make payroll just due to the, the way monies come in. Perfect example, state pays us twice a month, so we get that revenue from the state twice a month. Our county auditors pay us twice a year. Some will give advances if you request them, so if you start needing money in February or March, and they don't collect all their monies till April, you can ask for it advanced and get it. In Butler County, they went to one advance, and then the settlement. This year, because they got behind, I don't know what the issue was, we didn't get the advance, just last week, here we are in April, we received the settlement, twenty-two million dollars. Now, if a district doesn't have twenty-two million dollars on their books and they gotta make payroll because of that thirty percent cap, that's gonna be a problem for a lot of school districts. Now, here's the resolution, how we fix this cap according to the House and what they voted on. At the end of this year, I have to certify by August fifteenth what our carryover balance is, and what the percentage is compared to the expenditures we had that year. And if it's anything above thirty percent, that gives the county auditor time to reduce the millage rates of the taxes for our taxpayers to start paying in the next year's tax bills. So if it's, if we're at thirty-six million dollars and we could only cap at thirty million dollars, and I'm just assuming a hundred million dollars expenditures to make the math easy tonight, that's six million dollars worth of millage that are gonna be reduced in the next year. So instead of collecting forty-four million dollars, we're gonna collect six million dollars less of that the next year, which in theory, unless we really reduce our expenditures, and we don't have a lot of inflation, should keep us under the thirty percent cap. If it doesn't, and we're still above it, they do it again, each and every year. Caveat is, when you go below the thirty percent cap, you don't get that money back. It's not like they increase the millage to get you back to the thirty percent, it is just a cap, once you go over it, you get penalized, it goes back to the taxpayers. And they are calling this the greatest real estate tax reform in the history of Ohio. So they're taking a lot of pride in saying, we're gonna get you your tax money back, 'cause those filthy rich districts are holding on to it too much. I had mentioned earlier that we have a thirty-eight percent carryover, which I've been very proud of, that's the highest we've been in fifteen or more years that I know of. The average percentage in twenty nineteen was thirty-six percent for school districts. It jumped up to forty-five percent in twenty twenty-four, the end of last year, and why do we think that is? SIR dollars, the SIR dollars we receive, we're able to supplant and save our general fund and use those dollars in place of it. Not all of it, just certainly in certain areas where it was allowable. That's why you saw a bump, that's why we saw a bump. I was able to take it and say, okay, we, you know, where these funds were being spent out of the general, we can use the SIR dollar, spend it down. But here's the caveat, when we do our five-year forecast in twenty twenty-nine, that carryover drops to ten percent on average for school districts. So when you have cyclical flows in, in cash flow because of levies coming and going, especially on the temporary levies or, or the dollar-based levies, when you're gonna run a levy for five years or ten years, you get more money upfront to cover inflation to get you by for those five or ten years. So you're gonna have a much higher balance that first year you collect, but you're gonna have to give it all back now when you run a levy. You're gonna have to run levies more often, and another big issue that we're concerned about is bond ratings. I went and talked to Moody's, Moody's said, yep, this is gonna have a harsh effect on how we're rating schools, especially if you're in that low cyclical. We hear you have to borrow money to make payroll, that's not gonna help your bond rating, when, if you have to go out and build a building or what have you, and you get that rating, the better your rating, the less percentage you pay on those bonds. So it costs the taxpayers more when you're got a lower tax, got a lower rating for your school district, a lower credit rating. So a lot of huge concerns with it. What we're hearing is the Speaker of the House, Matt Huffman, this is his number-one issue that he wants to solve, because we somehow, we're at fault for our real estate going up forty-four percent last triennial update. That's one of my items. Second item, I didn't have it on the list, Deb, you'll have to help me with the one after it. They wanna reduce our five-year forecast down to three years. Why do they wanna do that? They want, don't wanna see what happens in the fourth and fifth year, they don't want that mapped out, because they don't wanna see that ten percent on there, 'cause it's probably not gonna make them look good knowing they're doing this to us. I've already said, I'm gonna send them my five-year and just do a big X in here, four and five, and send it to them, 'cause we need five years to plan properly. And the reason we have a five-year forecast is, the minimum amount of time you can get a levy for is five years. So you need to see what's happening in those fifth years, you need to see when that levy's gonna expire, and, you know, sooner than later. If you wait and you don't see the fourth or fifth year expiring, it hits you in the third year, you may not have time to react and pass another levy before that actually crawls up and runs out on you. And then, what was it, I forgot.
Did you wanna mention how the bus garage paying the thirty-six percent in the bus garage?
Yes, yes, thank you, Deb, that was the other point.
You planted that seed.
I mentioned earlier that we could use general fund dollars, we talked about a little later. If, you know, if we feel that this is gonna be what goes into law, if we use the general fund to pay for the bus garage, totally legal expense, we can use those dollars to spend for the garage. Unfortunately, I hate to say that, but we may, you know, we're, we're looking at other alternatives, but they have been very clear and Columbus, we don't wanna see schools playing games with the money, trying to hide the money, trying to transfer to other funds, doing this, doing that, where they're gonna find ways to subvert us from doing that in the future as well. You know, it's a shame, every dollar we get, our taxpayers pay. I put a post out on LinkedIn against a representative that was so proud that this thirty percent cap is gonna be put in place, and I told them that they're not telling the whole story about school funding, and I shared on my little rebuttal that out of every three dollars we received in that additional income, two dollars goes to State of Ohio, so who's getting rich from it? So, you know, we're doing everything we can, we gotta continue to do everything we can, the fight is on, we're all working hard, every dread, every superintendent, every school board member needs to be involved as we move forward. There's still hope, we're only halfway through the process, so I stay confident there. But that's the biggest item there. Another item is, you know, twenty mil floor. Twenty mil floor may be changed, 'cause they don't like that, because now we're on the twenty mil floor, every time the values go up, we see a little bump, and that acts like a small levy, they look at it as though we're, we're cheating the system once again, even though they write the laws, we just follow them, that they're gonna take temporary levies, we do not have any in Middletown, but temporary levies are gonna count against that floor. So if we ever wanted to run a temporary levy, it could put us above that twenty mil floor and affect us from getting additional dollars moving forward. Generally, once you hit the strategy that we're on, you don't run temporary levies.
These are legislators, do they, are they getting advice from economic people?
Yes.
They are?
Yes, they have professionals that are vetting all this out, they're going through it, they're looking at it, they're, they know the pros and the cons. And, you know, I, I still like to think that, that eighty-three percent of every school-aged student in Ohio attends a public school. The, the other seventy percent are all getting nice fat raises between ten and fifteen percent in the biennium budget. Our legislators just feel that because, you know, our average cost now is fifteen, sixteen, sixteen thousand to educate a student, and that's elevated because of the SIR spending that came in, I expect that to trend back down a little bit next couple of years, hard to say with the inflation. And a private school can educate for six and a half to eight or nine or ten thousand dollars per student. In their eyes, why are we so darn expensive? They're gonna force us to not have the money to buy the services needed for our kids and eliminate all the expenses. That's what it's coming to.
But that's not a true picture.
No.
No, it's not.
So how...
And they know, they've been told, we, the, the amount of money we pay, the amount of money we also pay to provide services for our private schools, transportation. I pay four hundred thousand dollars a year to the county for them to collect the real estate taxes. Private schools don't do that, you know, charter schools don't do that. We have so many different things, and we've shared all of these with our legislators, but we need the people to know and understand why there's big differences, and you've shared that relating with us, that our people don't know it.
Right.
It's confusing.
They don't.
You know, school funding is like IRS code, most of us don't wanna...
Don't understand it, no.
So those, those are the big differences I see from the House, there are some other things we're talking about when we have better, better idea what the Senate's going to do, if they're gonna make changes to some of these House versions that are really drastic to us. I can't tell you my level of confidence is above fifty percent. You know, I said, best-case scenario that I, I see right now, that they realize going to thirty percent, by the way, it's about five point two billion dollars. If they stick with that thirty percent, they'll go back to Ohio taxpayers next year from schools that are above that thirty percent. There are six districts over a hundred percent. We've never been one of these districts that took advantage of carryovers, never had the ability to, we always live within our means. But there are districts out there that are at sixty, seventy, eighty percent, there's a whole lot.
Yeah.
Some very close to us here in the neighborhood.
What does that mean, go back to the taxpayers?
They're gonna reduce, you know, if...
Reduce your taxes.
It's a two, two hundred and fifty million dollar district. If their thirty percent is, you know, seventy-five million dollars, they're sitting on a hundred and fifty million dollars. Seventy-five million's going back to their taxpayers.
Taxpayers.
For one year. They'll do it through reducing the millage and what they collect on the taxpayers the following year. But, you know, another disadvantage of that is, we pretty much can look up our tax bill and know we're paying every year. That's gonna adjust every year in school districts unless they're so poor they can't get to thirty percent or higher. And that's gonna happen to a lot of districts down the road if this, this sticks. So again, I'm the very bad news Eric.
Okay, so as Randy mentioned, you know, the House just finished up last week, right? So we're, we're trying to hit some highlights for you, so, so you're aware, but they're just halfway through. So something new that hit that we learned about is the disposal of property, there's been some changes in that. So before, this, this is what we're learning, it's not final yet, but it definitely needs to be on our radar. So before a board demolishes a building that exceeds ten thousand dollars in value, it must offer it for sale first. So, you know, in the past, we had talked about demolishing the ELC building, right? So we must offer it to a charter school, or a community school, or STEM school, okay? If they are not interested in purchasing the building, then we offer it to others, okay? And it goes to the highest bill bidder. If only one person bids, they earn, they get the building. So we're watching that closely. Also, I sent you some information on a webinar that's coming up on April twenty-second in the afternoon. It's gonna go over all the proposed changes from the House, so you might wanna tune in and listen to that. So most people talk about the budget and the money, but there are a number of issues in House Bill ninety-six, from AI policy to, I shared with you about if it passes, teachers being placed in positions based on best fit and seniority no longer would apply. It talks about how they're going to man the State Board of Education. There are multiple pieces of information. So they're only halfway through, but they're, it, it's good to know and keep certain things on your radar, especially this disposal of property, because this may directly affect us in the future.
Is that gonna mean our policies have to change, our board policy?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I, I'd like to add to that, under the House proposal, it does, even though it says we're maintaining the fair, fair school funding model, couldn't be further from the truth, 'cause they're actually vacating, even though it said it will continue for this biennium, that way they lived up to what they said they would, with the generous two hundred and twenty-six million dollars that they're gonna add to public education, six hundred and eleven school districts over the next two years. Had they stuck with what it costs to educate a child, which is what that fair funding is, it would've cost them two point seven five billion dollars. That's what they don't wanna pay. But I will add, since I'm on a rant tonight, that in the House proposal, they've agreed to give the Cleveland Brown Stadium owner six hundred million dollars. Yes. Makes a lot of sense. So, you know, again, I try not to get too excited, there's a lot of time between now and June thirtieth for the finals to go.
We have till the end of June.
But we, we have to keep fighting, and, you know, between now and that time period, I talked about a lot of time allocated for certain things. It's allocated for, for all the legislators I'll be talking to, not only about the SIR funding, but about the state funding as well.
So if you can tune in, tune in on April twenty-second.
I registered today.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of a German say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?